Realize.
All meeting order. June work session, emergency council city of Frostburg will come.
Commissioner Donnie Carter.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner Kevin Groo.
Here.
And Commissioner Heather P. Chee.
Here.
And Mayor Robert F. Inge.
Ryan, you start first.
As we do each year, we revisit the budget and the actual results. He has proposed amendments for circumcises that have come through the commission. The budget is just a guide. So we try to run the budget and be able to go with the results. Just a few general comments. We were able to do a lot of savings in health insurance better for throughout the course of the campaign. To create some regular patterns from items.
Okay, if you're talking to people, you're probably just.
You want to come? That's coffee.
No, it's the amps that.
Right.
Another new one ordered.
Just.
We just.
I was trying.
Which is our problem.
So when we need budget for health insurance each year, we look at, um, who is involved with potential new development changes. Single coverage and in coverage. This is a significant cost increase for us. We also consider use of deductible. This is typically half the deductible contribution. So we've been really drawn with the deductible this year as of the end of May, we use enough to have this. So that's part of the city needs. And all the pretty clean system throughout the year. So where we build in contingency during the year. So we can, but we have one on flat. We've actually already gave the change. So we can use it. On the income side, I did want to note. Which is a major social revenue. We did the budget a year ago. But with nineteen. So our budget wasn't necessarily. This time, our income tax receipts don't do very well. We're in Charlotte. We typically get a lot more than I think. So. There you know what I mean. Last year was. August, September and first year. So we can increase that revenue estimate as well. The public utility taxes and interest on taxes and those are based on your date revenue numbers. The assessments on both utilities, even fire workers. And because we have tax deal, we collect a lot of the revenue taxes and associated interest. So those are all part of that first, the revenue on the corporate side. When we look at the expenses, there's been various changes. One item of correction that I made in the corporate fund was under the tourism contributions. When we budgeted that right on line item last year, we had that matching hotel motel receipts. But actually that right on with the expense only from what we made to outside organizations. So that's why that thirteen thousand dollar correction is here. We budgeted part of those receipts for city functions. We had some expenses that may during the year. Were impacted by additional expenses moving to this building. So you see that scattered around, some of that through the computer, office supplies, communications, some things like that. So there's lots of additional expenses that weren't. And because the departments have not seen these amendments, I just finished one yesterday. There could be changes between now and next week with what we present to the council meeting for a resolution. So for instance, because I recommended using, for instance, training and public safety. Because we didn't send someone to be patrolling, which we have information that says, no, we're going to need some of that money. So we take it back. We have had changes with fleet lease as far as timing of vehicles. So we give those line items are increased. Also last year, we built in money for unemployment costs. Again, because of COVID-19, we didn't know what kind of unemployment claims we were faced. And surprisingly, despite there being multiple claims that have been performed on our employees, we have not had other claims that we have had to pay. So we pulled that number back in the office. We had a retirement of a couple of works director who said that affected salaries. Because that salary is reflected on work on this corporate firm. And the mothers who have already retired then only got a pension or vacancy. So that place and that salary number and the payroll taxes.
Is that why the water department fund is actually twelve thousand?
Yeah. So if we flip the water. So.
I just want to summarize the committee.
There should be a detailed report to be filed. So because there was a retirement payout, essentially that payout is split between the funds. So that was an actually increase in salary expense. We had savings in health insurance. So when you have an increase in salary, we get the savings in the health insurance and some other items. And revenues are trending pretty well right now based on our estimates. So it looks like we're going to have the ten thousand that's going to come for the water. If you recall, back in January, when we did the first round of budget adjustments, we actually had to reduce some water funding. Line item, so part of this budget is restoring the budget. That we pulled back. And we created some revenue. The big change in the sewer fund that'll come out because that is where the sewage projects go through. We have not had as much progress on CSR business and infrastructure side. So we pulled out expenditure as well as the already reimbursement. So that's basically the change in CSR part of the sewer fund. The other item noted is within our sanitary commission charges. We have seen expenses below what we projected for the year. So are we able to show a decrease in that line item of the expense of seventy-five thousand dollars? So that change is somewhere in the sewer fund by a significant amount. Most of the other line items that are throughout the funds, you know, they're annual dollar amounts. Other than health insurance in those cases, if you have a specific question, then God will explain. I tried to give a very brief justification in notes of why the change was. Many of these things as the year has gone along, the line item is going to be over budget. And of course, with our procurement policy. And the department supervisor gets approval from the commissioner to go over budget with a plan for how we can fill that deficiency. So those are meant to reflect many units. For example, in recreation, we've transferred some of what had been planned to be used for seasonal employment to cover interns that went to the unit. The condensed summary lets you look at a snapshot picture of, for instance. We all did some expense items. But overall, there's still no change. That seems, I can say, isn't the corporate fund. We had anticipated needing to use three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars out of that fund balance for our expenses per year. And with these. Here is what to do here essentially without needing money for savings. So that's a really good situation to be in. Again, there's unknowns. Things can still change and change and surprise us all the time. But a budget is based on the best available information that we've got. So this is what I'm doing. I guess after reviewing this with the individual departments. I'm going to change it before we get to the version that we present for the resolution. If you have any questions.
All right.
That's good.
Thank you.
So we'll also be presenting for approval next week, the resolution that's required. For our Department of Housing, Community Development, Sustainable Community Applications. This year, we'll be doing one application that you'll be familiar with for the facade and building improvements project. The program that we've been doing, we have one, not this year, but the year before, that's still in progress. Where we're helping several different businesses in this business district that they can apply for half of their improvements to be covered. And we have eleven projects this year that we've helped with. So we're going to request seventy-five thousand for this coming year for that. And then also, there's another new project that we'd love to turn in a ten thousand dollar application for. And not to put LJ on the spot, and I'm going to let her tell you just a bit about this project because I haven't heard about it just yet.
It's okay. This opportunity literally just came up. Allegheny County Tourism, in conjunction with the Allegheny Arts Council, reached out to us. Because they have some funding in place for public art projects. And they want to identify gateway areas in Allegheny County that could use some improvement. And our hill coming up from the depot to Main Street was identified as one of those gateway areas. That could really benefit from public art improvement. And so we just met about this last week. We had a preliminary meeting. We're going to meet again and we're bringing ideas and funding opportunities together to determine how we. And what's going to be a good application for that hill. And some ideas were tossed around about perhaps. Panelled murals blocking the view of the, there's a deteriorated building in that area. So muraled panels blocking that view, but letting our visitors know, you're almost there. And here's an interesting tidbit of Frostburg's history. Here's what happens at the depot and what, you know, brings you up to Main Street. Here's what great things we have up here for you to check out. So that's the basic general idea. And the idea behind applying for the funding is so that we can make a good contribution to and really make it a great project.
Questions on that?
You don't mean that blocking your view behind Zenshi? Because I would really like to.
That's been an effort for quite a while and unfortunately, I hate to say it, but I haven't had success. So here's another opportunity that, you know, hopefully we will.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, the only other remaining item that will be on your council. Well, let me think that back. There might be something else. But for your council meeting, Sharon Kyle from the Frostburg Elks did submit a letter to you requesting. A waiver of the open container law. So. Bridge or B D, sorry, which is on schedule for the third of July with the rendezvous Monday. Chief or Commissioner, do you have any?
No, I see no problem with. No problem.
I will prepare that resolution as well. Okay, moving on. A couple of months ago, we had talked about. Potentially looking at changing some of the parking arrangements. And around the City Place Broadway area. And so in March, I presented the proposal after talking to Commissioner Carter and the mayor and Commissioner Groo. About parking and business concerns. And. At the March work session, you agreed to have me approach the business owners in the area that do not have any off-street parking associated with their building. And so I shared the feedback that I received from different business owners. I didn't hear from all of them, but the ones that I did hear for were in favor of the lease option of being a little lease of space in that upper lot. Between City Place and like the back of ladder. And that and the lot that's like up behind the vapor room and the Armstrong residence. So there was interest in it. And then there's also discussion in here to be. Metering the Broadway lot as well. We have extra meters that used to be at this parking lot that could be installed. At the Broadway lot to encourage turnover and reduce, you know, business owners parking in that all day. So I know there's been some thoughts and discussion about this some more. But until this meeting, so we could discuss it face to face. About how you want to proceed, if you wanted to change anything.
It seems like it's the business owner that's responsible, government business owners, and the public ownership proceeded that. I know some of them requested some spaces, you know, a certain number of spaces. I didn't calculate how many.
I think we're making a big mistake.
Really?
I think you opened up a can of worms. Michael Joey's already asked for spaces in the lot behind St. Michael's, we turned him down. You're going to give away these and then how are we going to tell anybody? Maybe you can park there tonight for another once. There's only eighteen spots behind the Princess. If somebody's got something going on at City Place, where are they going to park? They're going to park on Main Street, pick up all the spaces for the stores on Main Street. There are very few parking spots in that area for a lot of these businesses. I'm lucky, I have spots behind my business. But I have two other buildings here that do not have parking in that area. So. I think it's going to create more trouble than we think. I've said for years that we need to meter that lot and we haven't done it. It's used a lot. And I know a lot of business owners park there because they don't get, they don't get it. And this goes back five or six years, I've said this to you. And we've never done anything with it and it gets abused by people that work there. So the people that aren't, are working there now, where are they going to park? I want them to pay, I guarantee it. But all of a sudden, we're going to have, you know, the people that didn't respond all live right there. The business, the business owners that live in the buildings are the ones that respond. It wasn't.
Or have to.
They weren't, yes. Responding because they wanted a space for their business, they want a space for them to park themselves. So all of a sudden, they're all parked there, where are the customers going to park? We've already had a month and a half on Main Street where nobody could park out there. And I think, I think it's a big mistake.
I mean, I think Donnie makes a good point. I think, you know, we didn't do it for the lot, you know, down behind St. Mike's. So, you know, how, how are these lots any different?
Well, would you think maybe put meters on all of that? Instead of having permanent parking, put the meters not only down, but I, I for sure think we need to put the meters on this lot down on Broadway. Because now they have two-hour parking listed and it's almost impossible to keep track of that. And a lot of people park there that are there all day. So I know to put, to put some of these added meters down there, I never really thought about the meters up in that lot above. But that could be a way to do that too. Could, could, could we put eight-hour meters there? Could we have our meters fixed to be eight hours that somebody could, you know, if somebody wanted to park there that was in a business, they could feed that meter for eight hours worth of.
I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm more worried about during the day. If we want to give people passes to park overnight there, I don't care. But the thing is. You're going to, all of a sudden, you're going to have all these people living there, parking there all day long and customers are not going to have. I mean, if you want to make it that they can buy a overnight parking pass from eight o'clock at night till eight o'clock the next morning, I. I get that, that's not, like, that doesn't bother me. But I'm just worried about when stuff goes on. Maybe you got, when you get farmer's market, that lot's full. There's lots of times that that lot's full. Somebody has a birthday party in there.
What about like the, you know, I know of like. Something sort of stuff, they had those machines there in each. And you can pay with your credit card, you know, or whatever, you know, I mean, to do a lot.
Chief and I have talked about that some. I was in downtown Winchester, I guess just two weekends ago. And they actually have like our old dial meters. But then they just have a sticker and you can put quarters in it. But then they also have stickers on it to use an app where you can just, I think, and I had no cell signal to be able to do it successfully. Or till I got logged in, they're like, here in a one-hour free parking zone on Saturdays and I didn't have to pay. But like, I think you enter your tag number. And so then next day, we would drive down the street and, you know, or walk down the street. And this is alerting you to people that's meters expired and you can look and see if a car is still there or not. So I think. I think having the cash option remains important to the city. But I think exploring the new technology is also important. And then that gets into parking rates and everything else that I know we're not prepared to discuss today. And it's, it's, it's just a compound issue because the meter or the. Permanent lot that we do have between park and mechanic is not well used. And it doesn't seem that people want to use it either. And.
Has it been offered to people?
I mean, use those permits.
But I think part of that problem is you've got twenty-some spaces right there that aren't.
Yeah.
That aren't charged. And why am I going to go pay, whatever you pay a month for a block away when I can park nothing?
Well, if we meter those, but we instead, because people, I mean, they've already been asked about. Getting permits for those spaces, if we instead offer the permits between park and mechanic. Are there none?
We do. Because that's where some of our staff park now as well. So it's just, if we open that up and reduce the parking pass rate, let's say from five dollars or twenty dollars a month to five dollars a month. Well, and the other factor is the senior center isn't open right now. So like we're, there's a lot of parking challenges. We wanted to move all of our staff parking to rented spaces on this side of the street. And left that open for senior center and/or businesses and reduced the rate or made it a free lot up there. Free lot with no overnight or free lot, you have to buy an overnight pass or something like that. And this, and then if we had rented spots for all of our staff down Broadway somewhere. Then it would open up this lot more for senior center use as well. So right now, we're not feeling that push as much because the senior center isn't open. But I mean, that is going to come at some point again.
I just spoke with Joy this week and they're starting up quilting and an exercise class. They are still definitely doing Meals on Wheels and there's meal pickup now. So it's limited.
Yeah.
But, but it's starting to open up incrementally as things get better.
Thanks.
Elizabeth, if I may, Park Mobile is the largest parking app out there, every major city, even smaller cities.
Yep.
And the great thing about that is you can put on that side of a sticker and every block is a different set or whatever. But you can have time limits and that defeats me hitting my phone because I get an alert saying, oh, your two hours are up. Well, if you just do four hours, that's going to defeat someone either putting in order every eight hours or every hour or whatever, but using that app. So there are ways and it's a great app. On my phone, I use it everywhere in Arlington and DC every week. So that's the one, if you're going to go to an app. And then your guys, they just, they pull up, is there license number? Do you have to register for this zone? Move on or stop getting there.
Yeah, that's the one Winchester had.
Yeah, it's, it's the one.
I think what was attractive to me about that is just a low infrastructure cost.
And have to change the meters sometimes.
So the app is like kind of added on top of it.
And, you know, so I can reach out to them and, you know, find out more information and arrange a demo for. Police department and whatever council would like to come, if that sounds good. Do you want me to take any additional action right now?
I do have a question about the. Do we still want to reserve a space or two for the doctor's office, not for, for the patients?
The, well, the problem is the owner of that building, they don't, the staff parks there.
Yes, they, the staff actually took the doctor can parking signs and wrote with a sharpie, staff parking.
Yeah. So they're not worried about the patients. I feel, I feel for them, but I think if they're not allowed to park there, it would open up more spaces for, for people.
For people, yeah.
Well, and again, it's only costing them a quarter.
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's not like they're going to go.
Break the bank.
They're not going to go for putting a quarter in a meter.
Well, if you hit the tab, you're still going to need to establish your, the coin beer and then put the.
Do you want to start with the coin beer in the lower Broadway lot?
Well, can, if I recall, you like, like some of those ones, you can use cash or your card. You can use coins or you can.
Yeah, you can pay on your app or just put your checks down. It's just, yeah, you're going to start getting into, okay, what do we charge now per hour? It's just going to, it's going to be a.
You're going to redo.
Yeah. Which is needed.
But yeah, that's what it might be time.
Yeah, and I guess we could, if you, we have to pay for the app. If you use the app, it's going to cost, you know, it's a quarter an hour if you just put the money in it. But it's forty cents an hour if you, if you use the app.
Yeah.
Or however, however, I mean.
Is there, is there a fee for the app?
There is.
On some, somehow, some way.
And we, yeah, we would have.
You know, if we get them in here and they give us a nice.
Charge for that, to make that work, but.
They give us a presentation, we can get all the ins and outs.
Okay. Meters on the lower Broadway lot now though.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll communicate back to the property owners that were still exploring some options, but not. Not moving forward with what was proposed at this time.
Our, our sister.
She owns hers, she physically owns pavement behind her building. All right. Okay. Um. Next, several months ago, I brought this up and we just, it's kind of, it gets circled back to. The June twenty twenty-two election. In twenty twenty, because of the pandemic, the governor authorized an emergency charter amendment. For municipalities to change the format or date of their election. And the council, which was you, elected to do a mail-in election. Which every registered voter was mailed a ballot and a pre-stance return envelope. Myself and members of the election board staffed that election in terms of hand counting the ballots. Myself and members of the election board staffed that election in terms of hand counting the ballots and everything. It had a, there was over a thousand votes cast for an uncontested election. The last uncontested election there was, was in twenty twelve, twenty fourteen. And there was ninety-four votes cast.
They counted it. They counted it.
So, um, you know, I think there is, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, in Annapolis this year as well, about doing some sort of mailing an absentee ballot to everyone type thing or, um, doing what we do. So I guess I wanted to say, ask, do you want to go back to the old way? Just the impersonal election with requesting absentee ballots? Or do you want to look at doing an election where we mail a ballot to everyone and they can mail it back? Or physically drop it off at this building?
We had talked at one time about, you know, putting our election in with the county and what
That hap, so that is not an option for twenty twenty-two because that discussion with the state and that letter with the state had begun when COVID hit. And it was an election year for the state and that their staff, it was pandemonium for them. And we would have had to have started that charter amendment process in November or December, timing wise, to get on the state cycle. So that's certainly an option, it's just not an option for twenty twenty-two.
Well, I mean, what, what about, you know, like mixing that up? I mean, it would be nice to, you know, open it back up for people to come in and get back to some sense of normalcy as far as that goes too, you know? Let, let people come out and vote, you know, do.
And the other hand, it gives them to find it pretty convenient to mail or go after. Because they can do it on their own time. I mean, the turnout shows that.
I mean, it, it
It's complicated if we have a polling place and we mail everyone a ballot. If we have a place that they can come and physically cash their vote and we still have election day and you have to, which is what we did last year, we had two greeters and just the ballot box, which you had to physically bring your ballot that was mailed to you so that we know that there's not duplicate ballots out there. I mean, then, then once we're counting the votes, um, before we open the, you know, like, we don't know who's voting for who, but we, um, separate the voter oath form and check in every person to make sure that there aren't duplicate voters. But it really reduces the chance of that even happening by ensuring that only every voter gets one ballot. It really, it was some more work initially and it was just a crazy time and it was stressful at the time. But like, looking back, it was not having election day to worry about something going wrong. It was a lot easier staffing wise and you didn't have, you weren't paying all the poll workers to be there and you weren't counting on your election board to be there for twelve hour shifts as well.
So they was opening the envelopes and checking the
Yeah. Yeah, we, the third tardy printer did all of the mailings for us. We just sent them our form and the voter registration list and I didn't see it again until ballots started coming back.
Seems like it was safe from harm.
People's
The cost of this postage is less than what the cost of the, of the voting machine. And that, and then you rent a voting machine to make it simpler and you have, you know, three hundred and twelve people come up and it's like, was it really worth eight thousand dollars? And but worrying about if that worked for the three hundred and twelve people that showed up.
The hours of security training are involved in operating those machines.
I'm, I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah, that sounds good. Like I said, we had way more voters. Although it was kind of a disappointment because really we still only had twenty-five percent turnout when everybody got a ballot and could have taken time to send it back and then we paid for the postage. But I mean, it still was better than it's been.
Well, the other complicating factor is the Maryland primary just happened to be on this, got, get moved to the same day, sure election day last year. So that, I mean, that had people confused. People from the counties in Eckert were coming to cast their primary ballot at the Frostburg election. And, you know, and then we're telling them they have to drag down the cumberland to drop this off because it's that late in the day and so anyhow.
Well, is that something we have to vote on next week to?
No, that's a big process.
That's just
We'll start, I'll start working with Michael to prepare a charter amendment and he'll have to go through the full charter amendment process. So that's why we're talking about it now because it probably won't be resolved and in effect until December. So.
They're having a hard time. But I'm saying, I don't think what we did, did work, it worked fine. So stay with it.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I don't have a lot to say tonight about the stimulus money, but I did just share with the mayor council two of the documents. This is kind of the, uh, short version that the Williams organization put out, um, you know, the finance, government finance. But then there's the interim final rule, which is put out by the federal government. I think that is a hundred and fifty-one pages of really exciting things. But just to recap, uh, some of the things this money can be used for is it's for bullet points more or less and water and sewer infrastructure. Hazard pay to essential employees and direct effects of COVID. And then things to help rebuild, whether it's like assistance to households, businesses affected by COVID or things that can help rebuild like the tourism economy. So those are, um, the by and large of it, we cannot pay streets with the money. But we can replace water and sewer lines and get a mix. And then, you know, you have to pave the street on top. So, um, you know, we have several years to plan and for this money to be spent. So there's no rush that we need to, but, um, figure it all out right now. I think money has to be earmarked by the end of twenty twenty-four. Which means you just have to figure out how you want to spend the money by the end of twenty twenty-four. This is changed. And then you have like an additional year to spend unfortunately.
And just to clarify, we do have to take formal action to accept the funds for January.
Oh, so we can, so that can, I need to
Yes, and authorized representative of the city has to sign for it. So it's going to be one of you two. And I started, it's a link and that leads you through this multi-step thing. But I'm going to continue with it. So yes, we have to take action.
So that will be a resolution.
We'll have to vet some of the, have them have some knowledge. And yes, they did clarify, you know, so we obligated by December twenty twenty-four. And we have until twenty twenty-six, so it's going to be postponed. And the part in the, I'm not, I haven't tried to read it, but there's still a lot to understand. But there's the element in the description about your reductions in revenue. And they've come up with these formulas and calculations to guide you in determining them. And it looked right at the aggregate real organization, you know, like line and line and split, I'd say a K for our rental registration revenue was down this dollar amount, so that's our log spread and it was added in total. But those, that, that portion of the calculation, that's the loss in revenue. There's a little bit more discretion for a high rate as far as how much we're using of that. They just, you know, they describe, it's intended to support provision of services to citizens. And it gives some examples of the verbiage that we made upon more investigation. That element, which is going to be small for us compared to the total. It was spent on some other, it can be on the line. So maybe like, I know this is like protecting, protecting like cybersecurity, protecting your hardware software, like there's some things to do to protect a lot of treatment plant operating system or, I don't know. There's a lot. There's a lot and there are a lot of stuff to do to make sure to accept.
Did, did we get a final number yet?
No.
Because I know at the last, oh, no, they didn't have any, they said it was coming soon, so. Not as soon as they thought, I guess.
I have a feeling when she's saying, we accept, we'll follow the rules and then maybe then they'll say, here's your first half. Because they expected it's first, that first half pretty soon.
Yeah, Jason, like the county was finding ready to like get on the video call and show his face and picture and the license and the picture and his match board to verify that it was actually him.
Yeah, and then, and then they describe that how your personal identification is protected. But yes, you do have to verify who you are, that you have authority to have.
I don't, yeah, I don't know, like
I think we need to deal with it earlier than
Yeah. All right. So, um, there probably will be a few things that are coming up. With especially the water treatment plant that I will be asking, that weren't budgeted. But I would be asking you to allow us to spend that money. And, um, maybe some technology things as well. But I, I, I don't know the total. We're getting a tank at the water treatment plant. It inspected right now. It cracked on the bottom, so we're using a temporary cordy tank until we know if this one is repairable with, uh, seal or if it makes more sense to do a new tank. And then how we want to do the new tank, um, will affect the cost. So Mark Heiser's getting estimates and already started the process last week to get the inspection done and then once, based on those results, he'll pursue more estimates. So, but, uh, that's probably the big one. So.
I don't suppose the roof on the water building would count? Or on the water filtration farm?
The water treatment plant, they actually repaired and do the repairs in the seams where it was leaking. And it was successful, but they had replaced the drywall, painted and replaced the ceiling tiles so that the stains are gone. So I think the water treatment roof is resolved. But yeah, I'm aware of the water department roof and that's something that is, it's just at first glance, it's not infrastructure, so it might be a stretch, but it's
Yeah, yeah, it would be a stretch probably. But if other things are covered, then you're making enough money in the budget group.
And the other thing is, is, um, you know, there may be infrastructure expenses that we've budgeted for in the budget that, you know, we can now pay through that, for that stimulus money. And that frees up money to do projects that the stimulus money does not cover.
Yeah.
So that was actually a recommendation of like how to address some of these things. One of the webinars I was on. So it's just a lot to digest and I will get there and have some meetings and staff definitely brainstormed on that. That can be whittled down as we know a little bit more now, but I'm sure and then you all will have your ideas that you want to pursue as well. So. If we do get the seven million dollars, it does seem like a lot of money, but we could build a seven million dollar sidewalk project and, you know, we can't go sidewalks with it, but you know, like you could also do seven million dollars quickly, so.
So, yeah, we need to prioritize.
Yep, of course. Um, the next one, um, is forty-five Ormond. It's been a, a late problem that rental housing issue that LJ's dealt with for many years. It's right here by the senior center on the other side of the senior center. And it went to tax, it has a enormous water bill and it has went to tax sale two thousand nineteen, I think, you're late. And no one bought it, the tax certificate. So the city ends up with those properties within the city that don't sell a tax sale. So Michael Cohen pursued the foreclosure process for you. And that, um, just the deed was recorded in the city's name just last week. Between city taxes, city utilities and county taxes that would have been owed on the property, it's about twenty thousand dollars. Now, like normally, if we were to put this out to bid or whatever, to dispose of the property, we'd do what we can and everything else. It's just written off. The adjacent property owner had reached out to me and said, is there any way I could get that property without you going through the bid process? And by law, you don't have to put a property out for bid. It's just you need to do a public notice in the paper. I said, I don't know. Um, I think the only way we could do it is if you agreed to pay everything. That made, you know, that there's debts, made good on the debts. And so he was open to that potentially and we've communicated to him, LJ and Lee, helped me out this week and communicated that information to him and I did see the email that he was thinking about it. Would you be open to that if he paid that full amount to the city and the county and just transferring it to him?
Is that the property that actually sits on Park Street?
It fronts on Ormond.
It's on Ormond.
Still shining.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
You walk by and you wonder how it's still standing.
Yeah, we used to, as a matter of fact, we owned a piece of property there because we had a garage on it or we rented it that we kept parking meter stuff in it for years. Remember the, the little old building right beside that?
The adjacent property owner, his intention would be to demo it and build a garage for his personal use on it. So it's a very small lot. You probably wouldn't be able to build it any
I don't think it would be a buildable lot. It's a postage stamp parcel as it is.
Even turning it into property for the city would be a garden.
Twenty, four cars, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you amenable to that idea that
Yes.
We'll need to get that, okay. And then I'll, I'll have him address a formal correspondence to you and you can go on that at a meeting. Um, there's one additional item that I didn't have on here because you didn't have a document before I left last week. I thought, have you shared that document with, um, my I thought, maybe you shared that document with, um, did Michael copy you on that for? I'm being really descriptive, are I?
Fourth water.
Fourth water.
Key and I have had multiple expressions to speak in right now. There's concerns, well, can we actually, I don't know, are you addressing the property right now?
Okay.
It's not ready to be presented.
Okay. So that has been worked on, what Randy Shelton, the type of, you know, talk to you about last month. We're working on it. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Just doing things, I don't know what's going on. All right, thank you. All right, so that is all I have for the discussion.
We got the, uh, study grant for the microgrids and they are really going to involve the city as far as like in interim steps, not just like presenting at the end, these are your options. So I'll be asking for our input. It's, it's great, yeah. We're all going to MML.
You want to, we use some more after? Yeah, okay, all right.
We're all going to, uh, the city.
You do. Sorry, she was going to hang out with you and you guys are each other's.
Yeah, you're, you're my date for next year. I didn't see Rob want to get up.